Well, you could come back as the cameraman. You could come back as the cameraman.
I have it.
I think you got that in my journal.
Never did, never knew we had one.
I saw one of those one day.
Good work.
Pine, pine tree license plate. 240.
Call me Donna, who's out by putting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which we serve. One nation, and one God. And with all our best wishes. I take a motion for the May 1 minutes. Motion approved. Any discussion? All in favor? The adjustments to the agenda.
I have nothing, sir.
Uh, public comment?
Do you make those in terms of who comes in first or?
Follow that.
Hi, just getting one of my beachwoods road and I'm representing myself. And I'm just mentioning that I was in nineteen, in two thousand and eighteen, I was on the original dam committee. Uh, before bankrupted, put in and then did rebuild and all that kind of thing. So I've been following the, um, the history of the dam and, uh, what's, you know, been done to it and what, uh, water intake and outtake. And I'm really pleased to see that you have on your agenda an item about the fishery. Because that's one of the reasons I'm here. So, um, the water, as you already knows, is really, really high. And, um, I, I do a lot of site visits around the lake and, um, all the towns. And, uh, in the last three weeks, I've, I've probably done like maybe ten site visits. And on May first, um, I called, uh, the town and I said, you know, the water's too high. It's already three inches high. And we're having a storm that's going to come up. And, um, you know, you, you, you should be able to get the water out. You need to, you're actually behind schedule to get the water out earlier. Shouldn't be three inches high when it's fine, fine weather. And then we had an onslaught of, 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 of water. And everybody I'm talking to, only twenty, thirty people are really worried about their property. Um, the, uh, water is coming up over the soft soil. And it's, um, hitting the trees that are already, some of them are already leaning. Because, you know, they lean out to get some fresh sun. And, um, those trees, uh, can end up being soaked up, soaked up the water and they get smothered. And, um, the soft soil goes, goes away and then it gets eroded under the, under the collar there. And then if you get waves, the waves then splash up and then the water and the soil, um, goes into the lake and whatnot. And, um, I'm, I, and the people I've talked to are really, really concerned about that. And, um, what, um, I'm asking for some hope and some help. That, um, the water level can be managed more effectively than it has been in the last four years since the dam, uh, was, uh, partially rebuilt. And, um, I noticed that the third stream is finally been moved. It used to be at the fence and now it's up on blocks and it's closer to the gate, um, to the dam. And, um, one of the reasons, and I, I was glad that, uh, somebody from the Department of Public Works made a, um, this was a Facebook comment twice, uh, about, um, you know, have patience in you and, and, you know, let the water out. It's difficult to let the water out. And perhaps, um, IFNW, um, you know, in fishing, fishing and wildlife were, um, more interested in saving the, saving the salmon. So they didn't want to open up the, the third, uh, middle gate, um, because there's no fishery there. And, um, that's the reason why, uh, you can't exit the water. We only, we know that the water only goes out about an inch a day. So when, when there's no, when there's, uh, no rain coming, if you're already three inches up, you have to be out early before, before a, a rainstorm comes. Although it wasn't really a big rainstorm, it was long, it was a stoke. And it wasn't like a torrential thing like we had last couple of years. We had four inches followed by a couple of days later, another three or four inches. And one of the key things to remember about water that comes into the, into the lake over the whole area is that if you get two inches of water, that's four to six inches of, of water in the lake, which brings the water level up. And that's why the water level was three inches below the top of the dam. And what that means is that it's, it's nine inches above where it's supposed to be. Or actually, it's more, it's supposed to be at sixteen inches below the dam at this point. But we're, unfortunately, we've lost a little bit of, of, of water in the last couple of days when it's sunny. Although, you know, the water still keeps coming down the hill because it's in the land behind the, behind the shoreline. And it keeps, and so it finally dries out. So the water table finally gets down to the level of the water. So, um, it's, you know, you have a couple of days of sun afterwards, doesn't mean that the water's not coming into the, into the, uh, into the areas there. So my question is, is why for the last four years have you not used that gate? I know that the water and the, the leaves and, um, all that debris that comes in, you know, it obstructs the water because the gates were not designed right to begin with. Um, Jim Pellerin at the IFNW mentioned that when you actually wanted to buy the, the gates. Um, he said that they really aren't going to work. They're going to, they're not going to work. Probably you didn't put the third gate in there because it wasn't going to work. And you didn't want to rake it off. Like it takes a lot of time for the, uh, people in the, in the Department of Public Works to, to rake the leaves off from debris and things like that. But the fact of the matter is, if that third gate was in, you would have been able to open up the gate a couple of inches before, um, uh, Jim Pellerin said it was okay. So originally, he said, we can't open up the middle gate because official going away. And one of the things he said actually was, if the fish go into the lake, we're not going to stock it. But IFW is not going to stock the lake. And we know we're a fishing lake. So there's a lot of, a lot of difficult issues here. We've got potential falling trees. We've got eroded soil. We've got docks that sometimes people, they float away because they're wooden and they're not tied down. And then we get, um, the difficulty of, um, of the fish. So what I'm asking is, can we make a, a, a way to let the water out more quickly? Uh, in the condition that the dam is in now and put in the fish screen? That'll help because then you can open up the third gate. The east gate can't let everything out. And the west gate is, only got four slots in it. So it's tough to do that. So you need that, that one to be able to do that. Also, um, if you could get somebody who would really look and understand what the current weather is now and the current weather that's going to come in a couple of days, they can plan. Twenty, you can plan about two or three days earlier to start letting the water out. Certainly, you don't want to have already three inches when it's sunny over the limit. Because you're never going to catch up. And that's what happened. Now, when the, when the dam is three inches from the top of the dam, you are in danger. It's almost like Russian roulette. If, if another storm comes, what would happen? Overtopping the dam. And when you overtop the dam, the structure becomes compromised. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking you, how can we do this? Uh, one of the things that, when I was at the, uh, at that dam, uh, committee in, in two, in two thousand and eighteen, um, we had a four part, a four town consortium. We put money in, each town put money in. We had a hundred sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars in, in a sinking fund. You use that as part of the extra two to three hundred thousand that you did to fix the dam, which is great. I mean, it worked out, worked out well. Thank you. Uh, however, there's more things to be done. Uh, do you always feel, do you know that Jim Pellerin wrote a five page white paper? Uh, telling me, uh, things that should be done and things that in fact should be required? A shape, a maintenance plan, a management plan for long term? And if those things haven't been done now, you really are behind the ball. And I, that's what I'm saying is, I think it's time to not get behind the ball. Not get behind that eight ball. But to do something, and I'm hoping that the fish game will be a small part of it. The other thing I would hope is, and I don't want to bore you anymore with, with my unhappiness and many people's unhappiness with that, the water level not being managed, uh, well. Um, but one of the things I would hope for is that you would really consider not being the only people on this lake that care about maintaining the lake. But that you open up your understanding of who can help and how they can help. And, and Otis Field and, um, and Casco built a dam. They cooperated and, um, they managed their, and it's really a good, a good effect. Otis Field, Casco and Poland could be your allies, could be your partners to really look at what needs to be done, how you can do it, and then make a plan for how to fund it and how to actually create this, uh, without having to build a whole new dam, which is one of the, the things that people were worried about before. Because, oh my God, it's going to be a million, million and a half to do that. We can't, can't tax people for all that kind of thing. So thank you for the investment four years ago. Because the, the boards were bending out and if they had run out, we would have had, uh, all the, all the water would have been out. But just think, if the dam is overtopped and compromised and it can't hold the water in and the water level goes down four feet, what is going to happen to the tax base? It's going to disappear. And in order to keep your, your coffers full of the tax revenues, you're going to have to raise the taxes on the people who are not on the lake. Because the disproportionate amount of the taxes are paid by the people who are on, on the lake. They've got higher, higher value and they pay higher taxes. So I'm going to rest with that and I'm going to say, please, do something about planning. Because you have not planned for the last four years. Thank you very much.
Do you have any comments on, uh, on the fish gate?
I mean, the only thing to add is that, yes, the board has aware of Mr. Pellerin's report that was shared a few years back when, when he provided that. Uh, it is timely, the fish gate is on, that'll be on for discussion tonight. Uh, one of the things that was been discussed in the budget process, it was also identified, if I remember right, by Mr. Pellerin. And then just observation is the retaining wall that's down there as well. Uh, that retaining wall, we've been, I say we, meaning the selectmen in the town, have been putting money aside in the, uh, reserve account to build up enough money to be able to replace that retaining wall. Working with pine tree engineering to, just they just did a survey and they're working on design of the replacement and some estimated costs so that we can move forward with that. So, um, this thing with the, uh, fish gate has been very frustrating in the sense of the difficulty. And I'll talk about this more in a little bit. It's been difficult to get a contractor who has got the availability and is qualified to do it.
Yes, dollars are expensive.
Yep, so, but, uh, so that's just, just a couple of bits.
Well, thank you. It, it would be, I think, helpful not just to have a couple of alerts from the, um, Department of Public Works saying, please have patience. Because quite frankly, the people I talk about, um, are impatient if things haven't been done. So if you could publicize what your plans are, provide a timed, uh, idea about, uh, what needs to be done and when it could be done, you would, I think, alleviate a lot of people's frustrations and, and anxiety about the fact that the water is coming up onto their property and their property is disappearing. One of the problems with water just making this, this shore disappear is because we have, um, high winds and high waves. And then we have these some of the increasing boats that make waves, which then attack, attack the shore. So it's, it's, it's a problem. It's not just the water in the, in the lake, it's, it's the water in the movement. So thank you again, and I hope that you can come out with a public statement about what you plan to do, uh, when you plan to do it, how much it's going to cost and where the revenue is going to come from. All of those are just part of planning a business opportunity. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments to that? Louis.
Oh, these are just questions, I guess. Do we still walk the town lines? Or do we give that up?
Do we still what?
Walk the town lines? I think it was every ten years where we supposed to meet with the other, uh, budding towns and walk them. Have you done that? Okay. Do we need to do that?
Usually you will get something in the mail telling you that that is starting. Um, and if you haven't seen anything, um, I recall that from all the other towns. It's a letter comes telling you that that process is getting ready to start. So I don't know when it was done here last.
I, I think.
But the towns are notified.
Twelve years.
Okay, the towns are notified.
So who makes the decision that it starts?
From what I recall, I remember when Raymond Colby was here, he was always involved in that process. That was a long time ago.
Yeah, and, and, uh, the guy that does, uh, wood block.
No, you don't.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I think the last time I remember, and it was Michael. Um, it was, uh, he and Dennis Amborn.
Yes, and he was involved too.
Because it's supposed to be a selectman, I remember.
There might be something in the file. I can't think of what it's actually called right now. See if I can think of it.
Only that's one.
There might be something.
Can we get a, uh, the lights, I didn't even know you, the, um, TF levels in the lake and, well, also around the waters. They did, remember they did, Ricky here?
No, no, the TFs. TFs.
TFs, yeah. Uh, the, um, they did the two brooks that are out there in that field and so forth. They'll, you know, no, you don't know. Okay. Well, anyway, see Ricky Jack, because they did the brooks, miss, uh, one of the, what are the names of the brooks were right there? Better Brook and the other one. Say it again?
No.
No, no, right there. It was just right there on, on, um, Sam Grove Hill. That, that, that they came in and they sent it, we all got a, well, I got.
Oh, you're talking about the, down below. You go down below the hill?
Yeah, and it.
Point comes right in on you.
Yes, that was the other one. So the two brooks in, in the field and I think there are a couple of wells done too. Well, anyway, I wondered if we could get more of them in the town.
I know there's only one field, only one field, I know, Dr. Murches Field.
I gotta put my thing back, think all the good campaigner. I took it out and I forgot it.
I said, the only, uh, brook I know that goes into a field in East Archer is Dr. Murches.
Yeah. Well, well, that, that brook comes all the way down to Colby's. Um, comes all the way down to one twenty-one.
Oh, yeah. And I mean, I thought you were talking about East Archer.
Well, basically, we started, that's where they started, but they follow it. The state or whoever does it follows it to its ending.
Goes into Little Eversburg.
Yes, where it goes in there. And so I just wondered if we had other things that we could check.
Mr. Brook. Is the one down below towards you?
Yeah, he says that, yeah. Anyway, that's one you could, maybe you can get some more of it. And the other one is the airport. Did we ever get rid of all the chemicals that were at the airport? I keep looking at the bath and front looking. They were there. So did we get rid of them? I think you were one of the guys up there at the time.
The only chemicals that were there were the paints. Well, that was there.
No, we had the foam too.
I'm wondering, were opposing the county commissioners meeting, because they're the ones that run the airport?
Yeah. I don't remember the foam, I remember paints because of the guy rehabbing the planes there.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it wasn't airport, so we got the same setup.
I know we got rid of the paints, but I don't know what you think about foam.
Well, can somebody find that out? Or is that?
The town doesn't own the airport or.
You can go, you came over the county, Nassau County.
No, but it was all the water that underneath it. I mean, it's everybody's drinking water. So I do think it's important, but you're saying it's got to come from the county commissioners?
The county own.
I don't have jurisdiction over it. The town doesn't.
Really? Okay. I guess that's all.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. Business items. Uh, five one, review and award Hundred Yard Compact of Waste Hauling, our fee.
All right, quick recap. This was out, uh, the other month. We received a few bids. The board felt, uh, in a nutshell, they were a little bit high, so we put them back out. Bid again. Town received four bids this time. Two oh seven waste LLC for four forty-five a haul. AJ Griffin Inc. for four fifty a haul. Pine Tree Waste Casella, three thirty a haul. Almighty Waste, two seventy-nine a haul. Um, spoke to Ed Knightley about it as well. Uh, the past, Almighty's done the hauling for us. They were good to work with, no complaints. They were responsive. So they are the lowest bidder. And I think, uh, from both Ed and I, that would be our recommendation forward that the board consider.
They meet all the specs, all the asks and the hits?
Yep.
So, okay.
Did you second it, Kelly? Okay. Any more discussion on it? All in favor? Five two, review and sign MSAD seventeen warrant for the budget validation referendum.
Motion approved.
Second.
Get some call? Would you say?
Sharing made the motion and call is seconded.
Seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
If there are two original, so you guys will be so kind. Uh, just a reminder, the district budget meeting is May twentieth. And then, of course, the referendum vote date will be on the tenth of June. Thank you.
Be sure. Five three, giving twenty twenty-five town meeting warrant.
All right, so everybody has a copy of the updated, uh, town meeting warrants. This is, uh, the same as we've looked at last few meetings. Just want to make sure that, uh, where we've got the included articles, uh, for the road bomb. We have the included article for the Fourth Street Cemetery and the included article regarding referendum, uh, town meeting versus open town meeting as well. So if everybody's satisfied with everything, I would ask the, the board if we can sign the warrant.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Get you a copy of that, Doug?
Coming at you. And a reminder to those in the room, town meeting will be in this room again this year. So seemed to work good last year.
Easy.
Thank you, sir.
Five four, Thompson Lake Dam Center Fish Screen.
All right, we kind of touched on this a few minutes ago. The, uh, long and short of it is that, um, uh, Jim Bennett's, our, our works foreman, has been reaching out to different contractors. He was able to make contact with Bancroft Contracting. They were willing to give us a quote of eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to install that center fish screen on the center gate. Um, that's been a thing that we've been trying to do for the last three or four years. It's just we've been having a hard time finding a contractor with the ability and time to do it. So that includes the, the installation of the gate, which is divers and, uh, boom truck and, and personnel and so forth. So I'm asking permission from the board to move forward with Bancroft's offer and use the fun, funding from the Thompson Lake Dam Reserve to do it.
Let me show the big.
We should do a proof. Second.
Any more discussion?
I have a time line on there to do it. They think they can get to this within the next two weeks if I give them the go-ahead tomorrow.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Uh, town clerk's office report. That was.
Um, so you folks have already, um, met our new hires, Audrey Swayze and Chris Marson. Audrey has been promoted to the position of deputy clerk and, um, both are continuing the required training. Um, I am currently preparing and working on the town report and prepping for the town meeting and municipal election. The Secretary of State has completed the purge of inactive voters. And our office is working on removing those voter cards from our voter file. While doing this, we're also looking for, for any inaccuracies that we may have in our voter list. I've been working on updating our forms internally and ensuring we are using the correct forms from the state domain for, um, uh, different applications across what we do upfront. Um, thirty day notice of impending liens will be mailed out at the end of this month. We are now live streaming our meetings directly to our YouTube channel and still working on uploading previously reported meetings to our website. The website will be transitioning to a new platform. That should be more user friendly. And through that transition, there's going to be different updates that they're making, um, which will also allow us to do adding different, um, tabs such as local business listings. And the town manager and I have been, um, having discussions on how to better track and store cemetery records, making the town clerk a front-facing office to allow for a third cashier when we need one out there and adding public wifi for customer use due to the number of customers that keep, need documents on their phones when they have things to do at the office.
All right. Any question, call me.
Good question. Do you get notified from the, uh, inland fisheries about registrations, looking forwards and what the weight limits are?
Yeah. So we have, um, the new requirements, so on the width, if they're over sixty-five inches, we can't, um, register them. And there's the weight limit. And if they have a, if they're a new one, then they need to bring in their certificate of origin. We verify the weight. But if they don't, um, it's their statement saying if they feel it's, um, within the weight of the saving. So, and if they get caught and overweight, um, it's on the, on the statement, the ball statement.
What is that, the weight?
I would have to.
The weight right now is two thousand pounds.
Of the machine?
Machine might have two thousand pounds on it, on the sales certificate. But when you add all your options to it, like, uh, the cover, windshield, um, wrench. But when you add all your options to it, like the cover, windshield, wrench, underbelly, jack, stuff, and that usually gets up around twenty-nine hundred. But now, they've been going around with the new, the bigger ones that weigh three thousand pounds. People that have bought them and registered them, now inland fisheries going around and giving them tickets and telling them they get a copy using the state name trace, even after they bought.
So they're going to use them on public, on their own land?
They can use them on their own land.
Yep.
But they're still going to be, you can use them on your land, it's still going to be registered, but you can't register them as state name.
Sounds like we need to pass a new law.
We tried to do that, and inland fisheries committee shut it down and kicked our bill off because we get too many complaints with Southern Maine, Norman Maine, and Eastern Maine want it. The three thousand, but Southern Maine doesn't. Well.
Many of your horse seaters are.
UTVs running around Portland.
Especially if you have hard doors on.
There you go. Yep.
Thank you.
Town managers update.
All right, well, the first quick thing, Rabbit Valley Road. Rabbit Valley Road from the Casino down to the ponds, down to the bottom of the hill. The RFP for that has been put out. I go ahead and, I went ahead and attached to your faculty here, just if you want to see it, the posting that's on the website. But Pine Tree Engineering is taking care of all that for us. So if anybody's interested in that, we asked that everybody go through Pine Tree Engineering because they're collecting and reviewing all of the bids that we received. The other thing is, I've put together some, put together the handouts for town meeting for the board. I'll also be making, making copies for town meeting to have, like we did last year. We've got the names on them, so, that's me. So call lead Sharon if you can pass those down. So this is just the reference material, which should look a little bit familiar from last year. We've got a summary in the front, just a couple of quick points. The articles, as you go through, are labeled in tabs so that there's quick reference, just like was done in the past. Different ones, for instance, you know, with general government administration, you know, it shows what the budget increase is, and notes what the notable changes are. I didn't go through and note every single change, just, you know, things with monetary value or changes to operations and that kind of stuff. So with all of the budgetary ones that's been done, I also attempted to provide some explanation and backup when it comes to, like the fire department, you know, explaining the differences between the two options that are on the table. Also, when we moved even further in with some of the articles with debt service, I attempted to also go into detail, but last year there was some questions, not on town meeting four, but I was asked questions about when does the debt expire, those kind of things. So I included that kind of stuff in there as well. So just in general, I hope it's comprehensive and helpful. If the board members are looking at this and you see something that you wish to be added or changed, if you can let me know, please. But my hope is that this helps us all be on the same page and helpful. Like I said, I'll make these up, they won't be in binders, but we'll make them up in paper copies for town meeting to have and reference too. I feel like it's helpful, I hope other people do too, so.
We get out?
And I take it where I can get it when it comes to being on that stuff. I would ask that the board take a couple of minutes, maybe between now and the next time we see each other, and just look at the explanation that I've provided for the road bond, which is Article thirty-five, and the explanation regarding cemetery, Fourth Street Cemetery. See if you can take a look at those two, just make sure that you folks agree with that. And then lastly, Article thirty-seven, which is the referendum town meeting. I try to do my best to encompass what we've discussed on that. That's all I've got for you.
Do you have any slot?
No, I don't.
About one seventy-seven to one hundred.
Don't worry, if you're not here next to me, then we'll bring it back. If you're not here by next to me, then we'll grab it. Okay. It's me if you realize. I guess you should be here.
Causing trouble down there, I guess. You're not causing trouble down there, are you?
I have a motion, it's nine hundred, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, or hundred.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion, motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.